I'd like to go home and shave.
Okay, we're ready, gentlemen.
He was a super.
All right, got my $13.99 pen, $14 ton right there. It's so good. Pills with my wife's bug.
I call to order the regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission Monday, August 14th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
The pledge will be to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Nishinabe whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize that the three bands of A'Jibwe, Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over 200 years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards to these ancestral lands are an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which the Nishinabe and members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land and our community. Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner Asman?
Here.
Commissioner Bush is absent. Commissioner Chapman?
Here.
Commissioner Ekke?
Here.
Commissioner Wingard is absent. Vice Mayor Alsager?
Here.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, since we have a quorum, we will continue. We do not have any proclamations or presentations today. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? All right. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. The agenda moves forward. At this time, we have public input on agenda items. If you wish to present something to the commission based on the agenda, please step forward to the podium. You may state your name and address, and then you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, please use the star nine feature or the raised hand feature if you're joining Zoom on your computer, and you'll be let into the meeting. You'll be given five minutes after you state your name and address. Is there anyone that wishes to come forward?
Good evening. My name is Dee O'Brett, and I reside at 5048 North Mission Road in Rosebush. However, I'm the executive director of ICRH, which is the homeless shelter here in Isabella County. I wanted to take a few minutes to speak to you about the affordable housing that is open for discussion. And with something looking at affordable housing, it's noted that it's at or below, it's concerning people that are at or below the median income. And this allows, they set that as an adjustment because it allows them to meet all their needs other than housing. And if you look at the median income for Isabella County, it's $48,840. However, we have 18% people that live at the poverty level. And at the poverty level, that means a family of four is only earning $30,000 a month. And that means that an individual is earning $14,500 a month. That's their monthly income. And so if you're looking at affordability, I'm going to introduce a new topic to you called housing insecurity. And housing insecurity becomes involved when 30% to 50% of their income is spent on housing. And that makes them cost burdened for their basic need of housing. And if they're 50% of income, then that means they're severely burdened by their housing need. This leads to instability in housing, evictions, couch surfing doubling up with families and houses, substandard living, and unsafe neighborhoods for families. And you know we have that going on here. I can validate that for you. Now, if you look at that median income, there's a lot of jobs out there, but a lot of them start at $14 an hour, which sounds a lot, that's above minimum wage. But $14 an hour at 40 hours a week, your gross is only $21,000. And so that's still below the median income. And if you figure in that, divide that gross out, that means their gross is $18,020 a month. Now, if you look at a single bedroom apartment in Mount Pleasant, the cost for that is $800 to $900 a month. So right away, you're being put into housing insecurity. And you're asking people to house themselves, take care of their needs. That's not factoring in the cost of utilities, of a car, of driving the car and insuring the car, of groceries, other costs that they have. And that's where we get that insecurity. And yes, we definitely need affordable housing. With all that said, I want to tell you and leave you with a story, a story of one of our guests at the shelter. We were so proud of her, and she was doing everything she thought she needed to do. She was working. She was working full-time, and she had one of those jobs that paid a little bit more than the $14 an hour. And she was saving everything. We were working with her to address her past bills that she left and setting budgets and working on all of that. So it came time for her to look for housing. She earned too much to get a voucher to help her afford housing. And so then she started looking at some of the apartment complexes. And she figured with her budget, with all her bills and everything that she was trying to stay on top of, she could afford pushing at $600 a month. So she looked into low-income housing. She did not qualify because she earned too much. And so some of the very standards that government sets to, you know, that HUD sets to help house people, we have this level of people that are being dropped between the cracks, and they are not afforded housing. She was working, and when the shelter closed down for the season, she went to living in her car. And she's doing everything that she could. So yes, we need affordable housing. I want to encourage you to please keep working on this and help us bring some affordable housing into this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to join?
No raised hands. No raised hands.
I don't hear anybody, so I'm assuming nobody is there. I've got the hands up from the station over there. So, okay, we will move on to receipts of petitions and communications. Manager, dissent.
Receipts of petitions and communications includes the monthly report on police-related citizen complaints received, minutes of the traffic control committee from May, minutes of the Parks and Recreation Commission from June, minutes of the planning commission from July, communication from resident James Wilmot regarding Moser Street, and notice of temporary traffic control order number 5-2023.
All right, we will move on to the consent items. Are there any consent items that the commission wishes to move off the consent calendar and move into the agenda? Yes.
I'm not wishing to remove it, but maybe just clarification if we've already considered an appointment of someone for the MML conference.
Oh, I don't think that's on here.
I have an old agenda.
Yeah, you have an old agenda. That's moved into 11 for new business.
Okay, thank you. In that case, no objections.
All right. Manager, dissent.
Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held July 24, 2023, approval of the minutes from the closed session held July 24, 2023, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items as presented.
I agree.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. All right, we move into the public hearing. The public hearing is on the ordinance to amend city code regarding the International Property Maintenance Code and consider approval of the same. Manager, dissent.
The city commission has had several discussions on the adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code through an ordinance. We've discussed this at several meetings, and so we have the public hearing tonight to solicit feedback on the proposed ordinance. This ordinance would adopt the International Property Maintenance Code, which would set standards for the city's minimum building condition requirements. After the public hearing, the city commission is asked to consider adoption of the ordinance.
Okay. At this time, I will ask the commission if they have any questions, any clarifications that they need at this time. All right, then I will open the public hearing. At the public hearing, you are allowed to come to the podium, state your name and address. You'll be given five minutes to present your case. If you're joining us by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes to state your position. Is there anyone who would like to come forward in the audience?
Hello, my name is Joe Wentworth. I live at 704 South University here in Mount Pleasant. And I've been reading on the university property code. And while I think on the surface it often sounds appealing to have houses in our area and our city that maintain a certain standard and conformity, I'm also concerned about the ability of our residents to uphold those standards, especially in times of financial need or financial struggle. As we just heard a few moments ago about the struggle of people to maintain housing, it's not just people who are underemployed that can afford housing, but even those that own housing. And as I've been reading the code of other counties in our state, you know, conditions such as windows and roofs and outside structures and even, you know, rules that will say that if you can't afford to maintain that structure, then the city will take care of it, and a lien will be put against your property, and you'll be forced to deal with that at some point in time. And again, I think we all like nice properties. I'm in real estate, and blight properties can be a challenge for the neighborhood, and they're not nice to look at. However, I think it's an overreach of the government to say that this is how properties need to be maintained, and we're going to dictate to you how this is to be done. I understand that it's also, it's been a condition that if you own a rental property in our area, that, you know, these are standards that the rental property owners have had to maintain for a long time now. And my stance on that is you are running a business, you are providing housing for people that can't afford to purchase their own home, and there should be standards on the maintenance of those homes and those properties. You're making a profit off of that. Oftentimes, individuals that are not renting but are simply owning, simply or often, don't have the funds when a large expense comes up like that, or it takes them time to do it. I had three kids in college all at the same time, and I need to put a new roof on my house, and I've not had the opportunity to do that. And is my roof in a condition that someone would come by and say, you need to replace that now? No, not yet. But I don't want that to be out there, or whatever structure, whether it's a broken window or anything else for my property or anyone else in our community for their property. I understand standards, but I do believe it's an overreach to say that as a private property owner, we're going to make you maintain this. Blight standards are one thing, but as I've been reading through those codes, there's conditions for the inside of your property, for lights, for smoke detectors, for things like that. I think it's a massive overstep, and I'm not for it at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to come forward?
No raised hands.
I do have a text here that says there are no raised hands on Zoom.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward to talk about the International Property Maintenance Code? All right, this time we will close the public hearing, and I will turn to the commission for any further information that they may need before we go into discussion.
I have, um...
Yes.
I am reading, I'm reading the amendments or the recommendations here, and it seems to me that the emphasis is, you know, to make the place habitable. If we're concerned about sustainability of our city, the well-being of our community, and, you know, of our city, it seems to me that maintaining a minimum standard is not a big thing to do. Um, I'm not sure who is necessarily, I understand the challenges that some people might face, but it doesn't, you know, seem as if, you know, that we have tremendous punitive, you know, charges here for, you know, violating those. I also want to find out for us in terms of the maintenance or the, I don't want to use the word enforcement because that's kind of problematic for me, you know, who then will be responsible for making sure that, you know, the code is maintained? I'm looking at you, you're winking.
Mr. Lapsinger, would you like to step to the podium?
Good evening, everyone. Code enforcement will be responsible for contacting people and advising them, giving them proper legal notice as to what ordinance, there is a violation and are not very accustomed to what we typically deal with today. There's a time period in there for them to be able to achieve compliance and working towards gaining that. And that's really what we look at this as, as a tool to help us gain some compliance through education. And we are going to face some big challenges that we can't fix everything, because this isn't going to fix anything. And Mr. Wentworth is very correct. There is going to be some difficult properties that we have to deal with. But what other communities have done with this is we've looked to forming community partnerships with other organizations. The city currently works with Mishta and the NEP projects, where we try to identify a few properties to correct the outside and make it compliant. But without the ordinance and without the guidelines, we don't have a platform in which to say, community, we need some help with this, whatever that may be. And this is a starting point for us. We're looking at this just like we look at enforcement of rental properties, enforcement of code ordinances now. We're going to try to treat you like we would like to be treated if we were in your shoes. But if you're not willing to make an effort, if you're not capable of making the effort and not looking for alternative solutions, I mean, some of the things are pretty basic that we ask for when it comes to cleaning your yard up and some of those things that are, and if we don't get any compliance, it really kind of ties our hands as well. I don't have a whole lot of options now to work with you. Our first goal is to work with our customer, our citizen. Okay, how can we help you get compliance on this? Education is where it starts. Forming community partnerships is the second, and those things take time. I think an important thing that we've emphasized early on is that we're not going out here to, with a strong fist, telling people what they have to do and how they have to do it. We might try, we're going to be doing some educating and contacting people, finding out what can be done, what can't be done. We're not implying that we're going to put any leans on anybody's property for failure to comply. That's not in our ordinance whatsoever. Code enforcement is strictly exterior, but it does give the city the ability, let's say we're code officers, go there and talk to them, and they find out the person doesn't have any running water, doesn't have things that a habitable house has to have for safe sanitation and living conditions. That lets us know that it is a code violation, it is an ordinance violation. There are organizations in the community that help people deal with that, but some people live with those conditions without asking for help. To me, it's not right for the city to find out that's a problem and then walk away from that. Now we have an ordinance that, well, the house has to be safe in order you're going to live there. And again, it's minimal standards for that.
I appreciate the feedback because it helps to clarify things. I, you know, I don't look at this as being punitive. I think that it is important for us to have, you know, you know, some, you know, to have compliance, to have a standard of, you know, you know, property maintenance, let's put it at that. But, you know, because really, even though we are in suburban Michigan, you know, this city is a little bit international in its own way and does have international, you know, communication and relationships with, you know, international entities. So it sounds to me that what the code is doing here, the amendment is doing, is an attempt to, you know, to achieve some uniformity with, you know, other standards. And in other words, we are engaged in conversation with other communities, you know, Mount Pleasant is not in isolation. So I applaud the work that you have done. The city does have a code, and the issue is, if we're looking at, you know, housing, property, including mine, if my grass is overgrown and you show up saying, take some, you know, do this, I probably would comply. But, you know, that, you know, if we're looking at how we make sure that, again, I want to say this, we're paying attention to community health and well-being, the health of the people in our community, housing becomes important. We've talked about housing. Yeah, I know that because I had to deal with somebody who had housing problems last year, and there wasn't a code to address some of the issues that I had to deal with. I have pictures. So for me, this becomes important so that we have some uniformity, and that way no one wakes up one day and says, this is biased against me. Thank you.
Yes, I agree. This is not about oppressing the residents that live here, making them fit into a box. This is about giving them the security and the help that they need to bring homes up to standard so that we don't have anybody living below the level. That is so important. We have housing scarcity. We should have housing security here. Mount Pleasant is a reasonable city. We should have housing security. Go ahead.
I'm going to support this endeavor just because I think it gives you another tool in your toolbox to do that help that's needed.
Are there any other questions?
I think there's a lot of, this is, this is one of those issues that it can, it can be really helpful or it can be really harmful, you know, because like, and I've thought about this a lot because it's, everybody wants a beautiful city, right? But the effect it could have on people that can't afford to, I just did my, my brother just got a quote to do his roof, the cheapest one was $12,000, right? And if there's a hole in somebody's roof and they're living with it, listen, my grandpa died last year, and he had no running water. He had no, I mean, water was running into his house, and it was not safe. But if somebody were to come tell my grandpa, hey, this is what you got to do, that wouldn't have gone well, right? And so it's such a hard thing because we want our city to be safe. We want our people to be safe. But at the same time, we have to allow them the opportunity to have that will, free will to say, this is my house, I don't want to fix my roof, I don't want to fix my roof. And so it's just a hard thing because I agree with what you're saying, but I also know the impact it's going to have on people that it really, really affects, you know? So, I don't know.
I agree with Commissioner Chapman and help me, Chief Megan, to point me in the direction, walk me through that scenario if you were to come across somebody with that, with a hole in their roof and so forth, with this maintenance code as it's written and without.
This is, I can explain this based on an ordinance. Let's just take it to an ordinance level. And code enforcement, we continually work towards them, building relationships with their neighbors, building relationships in those communities and coming alongside them, pointing out what's wrong, why it doesn't violate it. But what can we do to make it compliant? Can we put it around in the backyard so it's not visible? Can we?
Say that again, I didn't.
Can you take something around and move it to the backyard?
Okay, gotcha.
So that it's not visible? Is there a place to put it in the shed? Is there a place we can dispose of it? Are there places that are out there? Coach shared with me last week, he stopped by on a property, it's in one of our newer code officers, and he said, I ended up spending a half an hour talking to the owner of the property, but he said I gained compliance. And I'm proud of our officers. I don't get very many complaints on him and how he deals with the people because of how his demeanor is and how he tries. He wants to help them as much as he can. There's not one ordinance that's going to fix all of the problems. It comes down, and we've talked about it from the beginning, is how are we, how is our enforcement level going to be on this? We're going to have to work our way through some of those things. You can't get blood out of a terna. We're not there to hurt somebody, but this gives us a tool to identify, ooh, this property is starting to have a problem. Can we have some conversation so that it doesn't get to the point? Can we have some conversation so that it doesn't get to the point so that the city has to condemn it? And then what do we do with it? So it's a tool for us to get involved before it reaches that point.
If I can, too, just coming back to the example that was given, enforcement with the code, without the code, on a hole in the roof. I want to make sure that I stipulate currently, right now, unless a property is very much falling apart, immediately dangerous, let's just say literally there's... The roof was falling in as a hole. That's really where our ordinance is right now. It would allow us to go in and say, "This is an unsafe structure. You're in immediate danger. And so therefore, we can take action on the current ordinance we have. We could condemn that structure. We could move forward in that manner." That would be the level that would be required under our current ordinance. If there's a hole in the roof, we would note it, and that's all we could do. We couldn't do anything right now, given our current ordinance. With the International Property Maintenance Code, staff will be able to note that the hole is there, speak with the property owner, discuss the issue with them. And I want to make sure that folks understand this, too. It wouldn't require a replacement of the entire roof, just only that that hole itself be patched to make sure that weather does not continue to permeate into the house, continue to route the wood. And then you might eventually get where a roof is falling in.
Yeah, and I don't think that we're looking at a... You know, I've only lived in Mount Pleasant since 2009. And I think, I love Mount Pleasant. I think it's a wonderful city. I'm not looking at beautifying our city. I'm looking at making sure that residents are safe. And sometimes, like with your grandfather, Brian, it was probably... He was very set in his ways. And it was like, "This is not going to happen on my watch," right?
Well, and there's going to be residents, and that's part of the problem, right?
There is. But the fact that Mr. Lobzinger is willing to go in and his code ordinance individuals are willing to go in and say, "How can we help you? These are some things we can bring to you. These are some organizations that will help you. These are some things that we can get this fixed so that you're safer." It's not so much about, you know, obviously, a house that is near condemning brings down the value of every home in the area. We're not looking at getting to the point where houses need to be condemned. We're looking at saying, "We can help you maintain this in a way that makes it safe for you and makes it safe for everyone around you."
I think part of... And I agree with that. But I think the reality is every time, like I'm reading the penalty, right? There's no clarification. And I asked for that in the very beginning, that there's got to be for me to be like, "Yes, this makes sense." There's got to be a clarification, stuff we're going to take. First offense is 50 bucks. I mean, that's not taking the opportunity to say, "Hey, we're going to help you."
I think that that first offense is after education has been provided.
But that's not what it says. And so when I'm saying yes to something, I can't say I'm saying yes to that because that's not what it says. For me, I've learned that I've made the mistake of saying, signing a contract where I trusted somebody was going to follow through. And again, it has nothing to do with the leadership today. But the reality is, this is going to... If this passes today, this is going to be the standard we follow, whether... And God forbid you get hit by a bus, and we get somebody else that's just like, "Nope. I see what it says. This is what we're doing." You know, I don't want to put people in that position, you know? And so I'm not saying I'm not going to support this. I'm saying it's been a lot that I've thought about because we talk about like, it's not about just beautifying the area. But I mean, the example we just talked about was moving something from the front of the building to the back of the building. That's about beautification, right? And I get that, things are ugly. We want our city to look nice. We want it to be safe. And you're right, my... I'm not saying... My grandpa made some awful decisions. That's not how people should live. But the safety... And the safety is important in our community. I mean, that's why the fire department and the police officers exist because we want our city to be safe. I just... I think there's more to this. And to Joe's point, there's more to this than safety in the International Property Maintenance Standard. It's not just about safety.
One of the things that I really like about the code is the IPMC is it's an international property maintenance code. It wasn't built for Mount Pleasant by Mount Pleasant. It's an international code. It's got tried. It's got basic time periods that it gives people to gain compliance. But the enforcement is at the discretion of the officer.
That's the part that worries me.
That's the part that worries me. Yeah, that's the part that worries me.
I have fully faith in you, just like Brian.
What people will say, and we hear the same thing with the rental property, and I like to compare it to that because it's the same ordinance. How come you can't get this rental property fixed over here, but my property looks great?
Yeah.
We are working on it. We're trying to do that. They have obligations. They have time periods to meet. They have progress to meet. But they also have loved ones that die. They have reasons that can justify leniency, working with them to gain compliance. So what a lot of that enforcement comes out with is, I believe, everybody is treated fairly. Is there going to be a little different path from the start to the finish? There probably will be.
I...
I believe it's important is that the fairness is there. We're creating and asking you to adopt an ordinance or a code for us. If we're not doing a good job with any of our ordinances out there, our citizens come in and talk to us and complain. There's routes and a place... They can lodge a complaint. It can be investigated. It can be looked at. We get discussion with senior management on that. And is this a direction we want to go? Is this too strict if it's not? And those are things that SMT controls and the commission controls.
I see this as proactive in spite of the hesitancy that I'm hearing. But I do see this as proactive. I see it as necessary. You know, I don't know. How do we... You know, I understand that it may not necessarily be about safety. But, you know, things happen. We had a flooding, you know, a while ago, and oh my God. Okay, the whole community was flooded. So imagine if there wasn't a code for the kind of structures that existed, that exist in the city, then what would happen? Fire happens. No code, you know, in terms of what, you know, how you address, you know, fire hazard, then what happens? Laws exist. Oh, by the way, when you're driving in the state of Michigan, you really do need to have some kind of what? Insurance and God knows a whole range of things? Well, those are codes. They are ordinances in a way. So without those things, how do we then make sure that not only are you safe, but that we are all safe and that there is uniformity in how we administer certain policies or protocols? And that way, people are not screaming that they have experienced discrimination. We'll be talking about a whole range of ordinances, including snow removal. That's part of the problem, too. So I think there is necessity. Yes, I understand that, you know, there will be obstacles. There will be people who would object to it, who'd say, "I'm not doing it," for sure. But the ordinance is there to say, "Here is, you know, we have a protocol. This is what we use to determine certain things." So we have an... You know, do we have a noise ordinance in this city? Okay. You want to wake up at midnight and start running your chainsaw right down the street? What do you think people are going to do, right? So that's why we have ordinances. It's not to, you know, hurt anybody per se, but it has to do with making sure that the community feels that it is made whole or anybody is made whole because you have a uniform standard by which you make these decisions. And I see this as being proactive, as providing a template for addressing potential issues and maybe avoiding these potential issues in the future. So, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Several, but we'll be here all night soon.
Well, we're going to... I'm going to request a motion in a second, and then we will continue discussion.
It looks like somebody's...
Brian has his hand up. Okay.
I know we do have some volume issues on Zoom, so we can go ahead and try this and see if we can get him in. Meantime, we'll enjoy the nice rain on the roof. It looks like he is unmuted. It's just...
We're just not...
Can you hear me?
Yeah, unfortunately, it looks like his volume is not coming through.
Yeah, are you able to hear me? Can you hear me?
He's highlighted, so he must be trying to speak. We're not hearing from him.
Hello. Can you hear me?
We've had this difficulty before with Zoom.
Hello.
Zoom was this magical creature that came around in 2020 and then has caused us all kinds of pain since then.
I don't think they anticipated what would happen to them.
Manager, could you have him on your phone and hold it up to the microphone?
Can you join the Zoom?
Hey, Paul, just let him know that his concern with enforcement, as we mentioned during the last meeting, Chapter 1 talks about noticing. So in no case can we go right out and begin issuing tickets for first offense. It's typically the first letter, put folks on notice, and then we work with them to gain compliance. If they need additional time, we will go ahead and grant that, provided that they're making some headway on getting compliance. And if they don't respond at all, we'll essentially issue a fine notice. And that's when we start taking enforcement action.
Okay, so my understanding is that we will... It is brought to our attention. We go out. We say this is a problem. They have so much time to comply. We also have other avenues that we can go through to help them be compliant. If they're not compliant within a certain timeframe, then we move on to the next step.
That is correct.
Yes?
Yes.
Great.
How do we get that language in the ordinance? That's important to me.
That is in the International Property Maintenance Code.
But it doesn't say that under penalty. It doesn't even say that we follow the standard of the International Property Maintenance Code as far as the penalty.
Yeah, I think, yeah, if you're looking at the penalties because the penalties are set up by our ordinance, so that is outside... Ultimately, International Property Maintenance Code doesn't really spell that out necessarily. Within the code, it doesn't say that these are the penalties because that is more up to the local ordinance to be able to discern what would be a proper penalty for us. But within the International Property Maintenance Code, under the administrative section, it does spell out that once we are informed of an issue, we go out, we verify the issue, we make sure that the owner of the property is understanding of the issue, that they know what it is, that they're in violation of, and also what has to happen in order to bring the property back into standard. They're given a certain amount of time to do that. There is discretion built in that. But you would probably want it, right? You wouldn't want to say just seven days for any violation. And you wouldn't want to say 30 days for every violation. It just depends on what the issue is necessarily. Within that period of time, the individual also has the ability to appeal if they think that the city staff has improperly interpreted the code. They can come to the Board of Appeals that we would have set up, and they can have that case heard there. And, you know, from there, obviously, it can either be appealed, overturned, or it's upheld, and they have to... The property owner has to move forward with those particular fixes to the property within the time that they were allotted.
Commissioner Chapman, I wanted to point out, I'm on page 48 of the packet. And under B, it's talking about how, once they're given some notice, that they're given 30 days to make a corrective action. I think that's what we were hearing about before, that they get time to react.
But it also does say in... There's the language of appeal in here. I can't remember where it is, but it is in the document. It says that they do have time to appeal to this committee or body.
One of the things that we do with in that period of time is give the property owner an idea to set us up a time plan. What's your plan? You know, let's say it's a roof, and it does take the whole roof. And they put a plan together. They put it in writing. Can you put that in writing to me, sir? That your plan is to... You're saving money. Your plan is to address this next year, okay? So now, are we going outside of that 30-day window to work with the customer? We are. Now, next year comes around. They're contacting us. We're moving forward. We're going to proceed on this date. Or let's say it's getting closer to the date. He says, "The prices have gone up, I'm sure. We're going to have to extend this." Gives us another timeline that we're going to shoot for. He's giving us a plan, showing us he intends to work on that.
And I don't think that that is the... Doug, you're very personable. I can talk to you. You listen to me. I can see you have eye contact. But I think that the concern here is when you're gone.
All the discretion.
Everything that you bring to this...
It's really not about me, though, because they are that way as well. And so are the code officers. They're trained to do that. And when we get the complaints that come in, we... Okay. And I'm capable of learning to do a better job all the time, too. And we share that with each other. We work on that. We do the same thing with the fire department when we do our rental inspections, you know?
But I think that they want more verbiage stating, "This is how we handle this."
It's too much interpretation for me.
Yeah, interpretation can hurt us.
Really, the people that we represent are people that take care of their places and don't. And the ones that's really going to affect are the ones that don't, right? I mean, that's just what... And I understand that. But the reality is, I want to make sure that those people that we represent, that I represent, that we are making sure that the reason we're doing this is for safety and for the security, the housing security. And with the language that's in here, it doesn't lend itself to that.
It does. It does say at the beginning that...
That's your opinion, though.
No, it does say that. I've read this through. Here is a section where it gives you, you know, opportunity to appeal within 21 days. So if you read through it, it provides these provisions that you're talking about. It does say at some point earlier that they're looking at health and security, safety, you know, of the community. So, and it says, you know, "We're setting up this appeals body. You do have that opportunity to appeal, and the body either makes it, you know, looks at it. It says you're given a certain length of time to do this appeal." So I'm not just simply interpreting it. I'm reading the material that's in front of me here. And I've read this a couple of times, you know? So I...
Well, and that has to do with the housing license. You don't have a housing license when you own the house. That's what the appeals...
But this also is appealable.
Well, no, no, I understand that. But the language we're reading has nothing to do with the International Property Maintenance Standard. This is very, very specifically for the Housing Board of Appeals.
It is the whole packet. Are you reading them as separate entities? Or are you reading the whole ordinance? You know, you're reading all of this together in relation to one another.
Can I get manager to sense?
Yes, please.
I just want to absolutely highlight that, yeah, the... When an individual would be provided a letter notifying them of a specific issue with their property that is very much appealable, and it would be the Housing Board that we would have set up, which really, we're utilizing, I believe, our building...
Yeah, our Housing Board of Appeals that we currently have. Building official chairs. It's made up of a number of citizens.
Yep. And so that is a local board. But I also want to... Yep, and so that is a local board, but I also want to highlight, too, just the, if there was ever any issue, and this would be for any employee of the city, is obviously within the organization, we have other steps as well, too. If we felt that, let's just say, for sake of an argument, a individual in this position was being too strict in their, in their reading of the ordinance and going out and being very firm-handed on this, well, that individual is going to have a regular supervisor, and so a resident even could go to the regular supervisor with those kind of issues. That person has a supervisor, that person has a supervisor, ultimately goes to the city manager. If the city commission gets wind from the community and then goes and says to the city manager, hey, we got a person out there who's really being heavy-handed with this thing, they wrote 60 letters in the past two weeks, that, that's a little bit much, then obviously the city manager gets involved in that kind of conversation. So I want to make sure that, you know.
Well, it's not wise for me to do that when this is my fault that it's happening, right? The, the reason the International Property Maintenance Code is being, is being, is having these issues, because I said yes to it. So for me to come back and say, hey, this person's doing wrong, well, it's kind of my fault, right? That's where I'm saying, like, this discretion just makes me nervous, right?
Yeah, but it's gotta, you gotta have the trade-offs with it, though.
Sure.
Understandably, because again, you don't want to be so strict that it must only follow a certain number of days, a certain thing. And so I think, yeah, you have to have that. And I think you would, and I would argue, though, that you would have some culpability, Commissioner Chapman, to say, manager to sense, this isn't what I had in mind, you know?
Sure.
A hundred people getting, getting letters in the past two weeks, and they're getting letters because, you know, the, the bottom part of their downspout or their gutters wasn't connected, you know, that, that's not what we had in mind. I think there's definitely some, some ability for the city commission to, to voice that concern.
I have a question, manager to sense, while you're there. Have you struggled in your time without this ordinance?
Yeah, and I, you know, we had talked about during our presentations, and this goes back to, I think, the first presentation that Chief Lobzinger had brought up, and that was with a well-known property within the community, the cat house, as it was called. And ultimately, we got to a property that eventually would have to be demolished. And had we had the International Property Maintenance Code in place for a property like that, we wouldn't have a house that's coming down, or that had been harboring stray cats for, you know, months, if not. I, I don't know how long on end, because it was well before my time. A property like that would have been, you know, buttoned up, secured, made so that stray rodents or animals or anything like that could get into it, that, that would have been prevented well before the state that it was eventually into, where it has to be torn down.
We get complaints on a regular basis, had one last week on a commercial building. I said, I, I don't have any ordinances to do that. I agree with you. Will I keep my property? I, this, I, that, yeah, I understand that. I don't have any authority to do that. And so we get the authority, it's no different than any of our other ordinances. Nobody gets a ticket that doesn't know they're going to get it, probably by this day. So when my, when code officers pull up on that day, and they know they're probably going to get a ticket. And when we do go to court, we go to court quite a few times. We've not lost. Now, I'm not saying that because I'm boasting. I'm saying that because I'm very proud of the process that we've established, of the checks and balances, and improving to the magistrate and to the judges, that we've done everything in place to, to work with this individual to not get to where we are today. And again, time after time, it didn't work out, so now we are holding them accountable to their responsibilities. And that's important, because we're talking about minimum standards, it's the same minimum standards that, that the rental properties have. We have rental properties that we can drive by today that are not compliant. They're in some form of progress, moving towards that. And they will get there, or we'll have to have an enforcement action. But we're working with them, for whatever reasons they've justified to the officer. But that's that way. And having a timeline or something strict built in there, we have a couple of ordinances like that. Brian, if you have trash in your yard and you don't pick it up, code officer's going to knock on your door, explain it to you, tell you that you have six days to pick that up. Every week, they can stop by and tell you that, as long as you pick it up, now it's the next, now it's the new day. You know? Because so much regulation or specifics of how we're going to do it was built in, and studying allowing the officer, giving him the room, and trusting him that he's going to come around it and do the right thing. If he doesn't do the right thing, his supervisor needs to be all over it. And if he's not, eventually, it's going to make its way up the chain, and we'll be here at the commission having a discussion, why are we being too heavy-handed on our landlords and on our citizens? When that comes along, we'll, we're going to have to justify those things. Because at the end of the day, somebody's going to tell us how we're going to enforce it.
I chair the Isabella County Human Rights Committee. And several times, I've had to investigate housing problems, where people are in housing, they're either renting, or just in general, housing problems. The last one I investigated, in fact, the last, you know, couple that I investigated, I took pictures and pictures, and I called practically every unit that I thought could handle, would address the problems. Over and over and over, they said to me, we don't have an ordinance that helps us do this. We don't have a protocol, something that we can use to address these concerns. So I understand why we need something like this, because for me, it was frustrating trying to resolve this. I could see that the person, the person I was trying to help was suffering, was sick. I could see that something needed to be done, and that's not the first time that I've had to deal with issues such as that. So, yes, my home, I might be in compliance, and we all probably would be in compliance, but there are also people who may not. And how do we protect those people who are really vulnerable, you know, who, you know, may need us to speak up, or may need something like an ordinance to say, please address this, because it endangers the health of this particular person, it makes, you know, our community unlivable. You know, I think that this is a good start. It's not asking for too much. It is minimum standard, it is proactive, and I think it does give you the tool to work with to at least address some of the concerns that come up again and again and again in various ways, and for which we don't have anything, you know, to guide us to address.
I'd like to hear from Director Loria.
Yeah, Paul.
I, you know, I sit here and I, I'm hearing these concerns, and I lean to the, the culture of the organization and the supervision. I, I don't know if you've ever taken a look at the Michigan Motor Vehicle Code, but it makes this book here look thin. And, you know, an officer can sit there and find a stop on a car based on that code for just about anything. They have the right to stop you to check the depth of your tires. They have the right to stop you, see if your brakes, if you hear a squeak in the brake, so.
My squeaking?
Then you might get stopped, Maureen. No. The, the, the point is, is that it, it, it becomes a, I, I really think it becomes a supervision thing, a management thing. You guys are the policymakers, you have the city manager that, you know, takes those policies and make sure that division directors like myself understand, and then I take them and make sure that Chief Lobzinger understands, and he takes them, and he makes sure that his people understand. That's how the chain works. And when there are officers that, and I'm using police officers only because, you know, we get a monthly report on, on their complaints, that, that's the same thing. That, that is literally what the city manager and Chief Lobzinger have been talking about, is that there is this level of accountability, and we provide that because the commission wanted that at some point, and now it's just standard operating procedure. And if you, if you guys want something like that, you know, you can tell based on appeals, you can tell. But I just do not, I don't, I don't foresee this nitpicking little, little stuff that is, that is being talked about as being a concern. I'd also flip it one step over. We're dealing with a number of properties where there's nothing we can do. And I know you said that you were worried about, you know, enacting it, and, you know, enacting it and then being the reason for these issues. I mean, I would say to you, what's the price of not enacting it? Because right now, I tell residents, I, I have nothing for you. I, that mattress, that can stay out in the yard as long as they want. That, you know, the, the structure of the awning over the front door that is about ready to slam down and, and crumble, I'm sorry, you know, don't let your kid go near there, you know? So I understand your concerns. I just know that culture of the organization, along with supervision and accountability, there's no lack of that for us.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns?
I don't think they want any more questions.
I think they'll take whatever question you bring to them. I think that this is about not oppression of our city residents, I think this is about safety and concern, and caring for them. And the, the code ordinance, Chief Lobzinger has never shown anything but concern about the citizens that live here. And I don't see him leaning hard into writing tickets. I see him being a helper in this community.
I agree.
So I will entertain a motion.
I think that we accept the, the adoption of the international. We accept an ordinance amending the city code regarding International Property Maintenance Code.
Is there a second? Yes, okay. We will take a roll call vote. Commissioner Wingard is absent. Commissioner Chapman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush is absent. Commissioner Eke?
Yes.
Commissioner Asman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Yes.
Mayor Pirschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, we are going to move on to new business. We have the consideration of appointments, the voting delegate in alternative to the Michigan Municipal League Conference, which is in October. Technically, that is usually the, the individuals that are attending. There's usually two chosen, myself and vice mayor, and Commissioner Eke is attending. If anyone else would like to attend, it is in Traverse City, is a very good conference to go to, you learn a lot of stuff. So I will open up for appointments for the delegate and alternative.
I would suggest that Mayor Pirschbacher, that you be the voting delegate, and that I could be the alternative.
Okay.
The alternate.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion for the mayor and the vice mayor to be the delegate and alternative to MML Conference in October. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. We are going to move on to consider approval of Michigan Development of Labor, or Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity Resolution approving the submittal of the grant application for the replacement of the Island Park South Farmers Market Pavilion. Manager to sense.
Thank you. City staff intends to submit a grant for the replacement of the Island Park South Farmers Market Pavilion. The grant requests for $2.5 million. We have our Director of Parks and Recreation, Phil Biscorner, here to present the proposed project to the city commission. Afterwards, city commission is able to ask any questions or provide comments on the project. The city commission is then asked to approve the provided, asked to approve the provided resolution approving submittal of the grant application. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Director Biscorner.
Don't you love that it's 27 or 26 letters?
Yeah, really. Good luck, try to remember them all.
Yay.
All right.
So in your packet, there are four pictures. I have the same four pictures, but I'm going to kind of go through them a little bit more. Just so you know, these pictures are just examples of kind of what we're looking to accomplish. It does not provide an exact of what we're gonna, what we would do should this happen. So for those of you that attend our farmers market, we have a, a building that is currently going in the wrong direction, and we can't really repair it too many more times. And so this grant opportunity presented itself, and staff identified this project as one of the projects that we could do that checks the majority of the boxes that the grant is requesting. This is one of the few grant opportunities that I've seen from a parks and recreation standpoint outside of the DNR grants. And this is the first time it's been anything of this substance, I guess. In the packet, you can see that we would be requesting the full $2.5 million in the grant, and we would only be providing $150,000 of in-kind match. This particular pavilion is down in Sterling Heights, Michigan. It is something that the spirit of, we would like to see as a community, because it houses their farmer's market, but it also has the ability to be an ice rink in the winter months. There are several options to provide that ice rink, and obviously, once we get into the actual design, should we be awarded this grant, it could be anything from synthetic ice to actual coils, you know? But we won't know that until we start getting into the nuts and bolts after it's awarded. But the main thing, whoops, no, I gotta go. Very touchy. The main thing, it would be taking the place of our farmers market pavilion and allow us to have more vendors underneath the pavilion. Essentially, it's just a nice structure that provides a good environment, but we would still be able to do a lot of our other events, we would still be able to do rentals there, and it would just take the place of the south pavilion. That's, I really don't have much to, to go into that, outside of that.
Where are you looking at putting this?
So there's actually a couple of options, but one would be just putting it in the place of the south pavilion shelter. But we're also looking at potentially moving it to the front of the park in the little grassy area by the large parking lot when you. grassy area by the large parking lot when you first pull in so that you can access all sides. It would make it a little bit more user friendly, closer to the parking and less walking for the people that drive there.
What issues are you currently having with the structure that's there?
It's just starting to deteriorate a little bit. We had an accident two years ago with an individual that backed their car into the pavilion.
Wow.
And they had no damage to their car, but completely destroyed one of the, the.
Posts.
Yeah, one of the posts. So just from it being underwater a couple of times, you know, it's, it's starting to deteriorate a little bit. And that would be another thing that's direct, addressed in this design is it would be a steel structure. So that would be helpful to keep it long term.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think lighting is connection for, we, the Human Rights Committee used to host its peace event there and we had a problem with the acoustics and also connecting, you know, equipment for sound.
Yeah. Well, in the, the pavilion would be a rectangle as opposed to chopped up as it is now. So it would create less cubbies for people to hide.
Are there any other questions?
Are the rental prices going to go up if you redo it?
We would, we would have to adjust our rental prices based on what everybody else is doing. You know, we're, we're going to stay market value. I don't believe we've raised the rental prices in a lot of years, but I don't, I don't foresee that unless there's a push that way to bring in more revenue.
So about how many stands do you anticipate the new one holding? Because I went there Thursday and it has spilled out into.
Yes.
Yeah, I wonder.
So we would be able to accommodate the market as it sits right now. I believe we would have the option to hold 60, 10 by 10 spaces. I would have to double check the math on that, but, and like I said, this is still in the fantasy stage, I guess you could say. But, but yeah, it would be more than able to hold what our current market is.
When is that work date?
Want to say it's October.
Is that when it's due or when you get?
No, no, it's due at the end of this month and then we will be notified by the end of October.
And then what do you think, what's your plan in start, starting, sorry?
Should we be awarded? We would probably move pretty quickly. But I believe we have until 2026 to finish construction.
So if it's taking, it's going to take that long, what are you anticipating in terms of where you might hold the farmer's market meanwhile?
We have several options. Right now, we hold our Saturday market in town center.
Yeah.
But there's plenty of places that we can move it should we need to.
Okay.
Even if we had to move it to the west shelter, it, it would accommodate it. You know, it would, not everybody would be underneath, but.
Okay.
Sounds like a wonderful grant opportunity.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting, that's for sure.
Yes. Are there any other questions?
Go for it.
I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the submittal of the grant application from the Michigan Department of Labor Economic Opportunity for the Island Park South Farmers Market Pavilion.
I'll second that. All right. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. All right. Make it happen.
Yeah.
All right. We are going to move on to number 13, Consider the Pilot Proposal at 410 Mill Street and 200 Walnut Street from Spire Development. Manager, desents.
In our last regular meeting, the City Commission, the Spire Development had presented on their proposed development as part of the city's request for proposals for affordable housing pilots or payment in lieu of taxes projects. In your packet, you will find a report that highlights some of the conditions of the proposed pilot project. This includes a discussion on the proposed rate, the proposed pilot rate versus the established rate in the city's pilot policy, a comparison of this pilot rate versus other rates of existing pilots within the city boundaries, a comparison of revenue from the proposed pilot rate to what would otherwise be paid in taxes, a comparison of the revenue from the proposed pilot rate versus the taxable revenue from existing properties at the proposed development site, a discussion on current and future Michigan tax tribunal cases, a summary of data provided by the Housing Commission on Affordable Housing in the community, and an example scenario of how the voucher system works. The City Commission has several options this evening. City Commission can move forward with the approval of the pilot as proposed. The City Commission could move forward with the approval of the pilot with modifications such as modifications to the pilot rate, or the City Commission can deny the pilot. With that, I will turn it back over to the City Commission for, if you have any questions or anything like that.
Are there any questions, concerns, clarifications that are needed?
I had one concern from the graph that we were given that was showing the various properties that are already considered in the low income category. It seemed like the, the ones that were Housing Commission properties had been granted pilots at the lower pilot rates such as 4%. But it seemed like some of the other ones that were just plain old low income housing, they were granted pilots at closer to 10%. And that's kind of an oversimplification of it, but that's the basic outline of it. So I'm thinking to do the second proposal where we approve it, but we want to adjust the rate. I think 4% is too low for this builder.
I agree.
I personally would like to see what else brings to the table. I agree with you, Vice Mayor Alsager. I think it's a little low. But I, I also feel that it's, it's early in the pilot programs that we've just allowed. So I would like to see what else was, you know, came to the table in the future.
Okay.
My, my, my response is the same.
With?
The, the percentage is low. And really, yeah. And what do we, you know, what, what, what is offered, you know, to, you know, to the city really? We don't want to be in a, in a position where we really come out, you know? I mean, it's not extreme money making, but the city also has to be made whole somehow, you know, and sustain itself through this particular project. That's, that's where my head is.
I remind myself that we're surrounded by union township.
Yeah.
We have no ability to grow.
No, except up.
Yeah. And that's just what makes me nervous to take something that's such a low.
Percentage.
Percentage.
Well, I will tell you that the property value there is probably pretty low to begin with. So just because the area, but I also, you know, I think that it's important that there's going to be services that the city is going to give them that have to be paid for and I don't think 4% is going to pay for that.
Exactly.
I mean, we're still counting on fire and police and, and, I mean, the reality is they're, they're, they're a business here to make money, but we can't, we, I, I think for us, we have to figure out what that threshold is between saying, well, if it's too high, they won't do it. If it's too low, it affects us negatively. And so what that number is, I don't know.
I do appreciate the comments from Dee earlier. You know, that, that opens my eyes to, you know, what is going on in the community and, and I don't disagree. I, I think that there is a great need for affordable housing. Just, this one doesn't check all the boxes for me.
So what would be a rate? If we were looking at a percentage, what would you like it to look like? We have some pilots in the, in the vicinity that are at 10%. We have some that are at 4%. What would be?
What's Michigan, what is the state of Michigan's, the, what is it, tax? 6%?
Sales tax?
Or 8%?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So if you go to buy gasoline or buy non-food item and it's taxed, it's 6%, isn't it? We are below that.
Gasoline is not taxed the same as.
I, I, I understand, but I'm thinking in terms of, you know?
We have a 6% sales tax.
We have, that's what I needed, sales tax.
So I was thinking to raise it somewhat significantly, maybe eight, nine, or 10%.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at middle ground, you know? I just think that 4 is low. It's problematic.
And Judge Desents and I had a conversation earlier and I, from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, if they were to do this project without the pilot and it would be taxed, inner property taxed, we would be looking right around somewhere of $86,000, $84,000 a year.
We would be.
If they did this project with no pilot. Worst case scenario, I thought the number was right around 45 to $50,000. But this 4% would only grant us about $13,000.
Which I do believe is more than the taxes that are being collected right now.
Correct.
But, you know, we're also looking at the future.
That's a big difference to me.
You know, let's, let's, you know, so currently, yes, but the cost of living is.
Yep.
Everything is going up. Maintenance is going up. Have you tried to buy items to fix something, you know, take care of the street and just simply the cost of.
Wages.
Wages, a whole lot of things, yes. So I think we need to think about all of those things too in terms of, you know, how much do you want the city to eventually become accountable or responsible for addressing these issues? And then it has no revenue or it can't, you know, there's nothing, it doesn't have enough funds to do that. You know, to what extent do we, yes, we want, we want, you know, affordable housing, we want to work with this particular, you know, with the group with Spire, you know? At the same time, it ought to be a symbiotic relationship where the city doesn't suffer because it's, it really needs this particular piece, right? That's, so what percentage then?
I can't sit here and put a percentage on it without, you know, knowing other details. So I can't approve it without just having, you know, if, if Spire is the one, then have them put their best foot forward and then I could make a decision, but just to slap a generic percentage on it, I can't do.
Because we know that we have housing insecurity.
Yes. I 100% agree with that.
100%. But we also know that for the city to take on and have these two units built means that we're going to be putting more of our city funds, of city revenue into maintaining the roads, maintaining the sewer, maintaining the water, maintaining the space.
I meant our point earlier, to have great staff like we have in this room here, you know, from Chief LaFt singer to everybody here.
Yeah.
You know, we got to continue to attract, attract talent to the city.
Yes.
Usually done with, with a wage or a benefits package or what it may be.
I would, for me, in deference to my colleagues here, you know, based on what I'm hearing, at least what I'm thinking, I would rather have staff take this back and look at other, you know, comparable places or, and then maybe rework the percentage because I do agree, I'm not comfortable with the 4%. I just want to be honest.
Well, and I'm curious too, what other communities are doing right now?
That's what I'm saying.
Because what's, because we don't, I mean, again, there's a fine line between if, if they can go to Midland and put it in for 5%, we're saying we want 15. I mean, they're going to Midland, right?
Yeah.
And so I think for us, I, for me, that would be helpful to say, how can we, what, what is competitive? But what, I mean, at the end of the day, we're here for the, to take care of the city, right? To not take care of a developer. And so I think we just got to find what that fine line is to say, how can it benefit everybody equally?
I agree. So what I'm hearing is that there is support for the pilot, but there needs to be more negotiation.
Yes.
I can't approve it though.
Without, yeah, without having that.
But we need the details.
So if it has to be approved.
So we have to throw it back to the staff.
Mine would be no if it was.
Yeah, we need the details.
Okay. So that's what it sounds like. So I believe we have to have a motion stating that we'd like it to go back to the staff to negotiate the pilot terms.
I would like to make, make a motion that we return this proposal to the staff to renegotiate the terms.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no.
That happened really fast, sorry. I just wanted clarification on something.
We're sending it back to staff.
And then they're just.
And they're going to renegotiate and bring it back to us.
Then it comes back to them. Then they can approve or deny?
Yes.
In that case, I, yes, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're good.
It just went so fast.
You got to follow it. You got to follow it.
Sorry.
It's like one.
It's past my bedtime.
Yeah. All right. So we're moving on to announcements of city-related issues and new business. This past week, Vice Mayor Alsager and I went to a mayor's convention in Northville. I can tell you, Northville seems to be the first of everything in the state of Michigan or having the best of everything. At least that's what the mayor presented to us, which I can tell you, their downtown is fabulous. They are considered the downtown of the surrounding areas. Their population is very small, but everyone else in the area uses their downtown and it was, it was quite exciting and thriving. We went to a dinner theater, put on one of, one of the Italian restaurants downtown where they called up certain mayors, I was not one of them, thank goodness, to, to be part of the theater, which I never knew that the, I think it was the mayor of Monroe could act so well. He died on stage. It was amazing. It was amazing. But the whole thing is just going and meeting with individuals that have very similar roles as we do in very similar you, communities, like the mayor of Saginaw, Brenda, I love hanging out with her. She's awesome. Steven from Kentwood, from my old stomping grounds, being able to talk to him about some of the things that he, because he juggles both mayor and city manager roles. Being able to reach out to these individuals at any time and say, are you struggling with us? And giving their, getting their feedback is so essential because as mayor and vice mayor, we are not islands unto ourselves. We have to know what everyone else is doing, just as we asked, what's going on in other pilots? What's going on in other communities? That's really important for us to understand those things. So being able to go to that conference was very enlighting, enlightening and just, you know, reaching out and meeting, seeing my old friends and talking to them and understanding what's going on in their world was awesome.
And one other factor, they approved a social district that was really vibrant.
Yes, they did. Okay. Are there any other comments?
Yeah, Isabella County Human Rights Committee is hosting a peace event on September 23rd. It's Saturday at the Island Park Arts Pavilion. The event will begin at 3:00 PM. Will, there is a walk, a peace walk to City Hall and then back to the pavilion. The city of Mount Pleasant, of Mount Pleasant is a co-sponsor of the event. It is open to the public. You know, it's non-partisan and non-religious. So we invite you to come. We hope that you'd come. It is in commemoration of the International Peace Day. So to come, talk about, share with us what peace means to you and what you do to help promote peace in, in our city and in the world in general. So come, celebrate peace.
Any other comments? I would like to remind everyone that schools are going back into session. The. The Mount Pleasant Public Schools will be going back next week, I believe.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah. According to my grand, my granddaughter, way too soon. But we also have Mid-Michigan and CMU coming back. And we will have this week, I believe, there is the IMPACT, which is the first-generation students are allowed to come, freshmen are allowed to come into campus much earlier and get acquainted with campus and their, and their spaces. The following week is when we have Welcome Weekend. And I know that there is, there's frustrations and joy that kind of go together with having the students back. I, myself, I enjoy the energy of having the students here, of the revenue that is brought in and of the just overwhelming, what?
Oh, it's it, more the merrier.
Yes, the more the merrier, the, the energy that comes in, I think, is amazing and that's part of what makes Mount Pleasant a wonderful place to be. So just be reminded of that. It may take you a little longer to get down Mission. It may take you a little longer to get in through the store. But everyone is, should be kind and grateful for the people that are here. Any other?
And if you see international students, please, you know, give them directions. I've done that already. People, you know, they, you know, they're experiencing culture shock as well as just being in a city where they don't know the names of the streets. And it's not just simply international students, by the way, it's, you know, the new students. So in case somebody stops you or starts calling you, you know, I think it's okay probably to turn around and see if they need help. Thanks.
Okay, at this time, we will open up the floor for public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. If you wish to pay, to present something to the commission, you may come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, use the star nine feature to raise your hand or the hand feature and you will be entered into the meeting and you'll be asked to state your name and your address and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom? No one on Zoom. All right, so at this time, I'm going to close the public comment. It is 8:31 and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I move.
That we adjourn.
All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? We are adjourned at 8:31.